All right.
Oh, just about the.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call this.
Let me say something. Uh, let me, yeah, when we go, when we get to approval of the agenda, I'll mention it and then we can go from there. It won't be nine B.
All right. Calling this meeting to order at 6:27 PM. How about a roll call? Ms. Tameri.
Member Ash.
Here.
Member Dwin.
Here.
Member Pats.
Here.
Vice President Athel.
Here. And our esteemed president is on vacation. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any proposed changes to the proposed agenda?
Um, I just have one, um, member Athel. Um, I would like if we could adjourn our meeting tonight in the memorance of Adros Calhoun, who was a former board member back in the seventies. Um, he was a businessman in Emeryville and he was a very, you know, um, good resident of Emeryville. Um, he is one of the individuals, well, he is the individual who got myself and member Dice involved with the school district and being on the school board. Um, he was a, again, he was a businessman, he was an electrician, and he did quite a few, um, jobs with the ECDC as well as put this, put up our, our, um, what, what the, what's the, the, yeah, what's the official name of our sign that was up there? The digital, the digital board? Yeah, the electronic digital board that we had in front of the school. Um, the Calhoun Electrical Company put that up. So I was just like if it would be to the board's pleasure that we could, um, adjourn in his name at the end of the board meeting.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll do so. So noted. Thank you. Uh, any other changes to the agenda?
Uh, no. No other changes.
All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. We will adjourn to closed session.
My office is okay. Can you do my office today?
Okay. All right. We'll be back in approximately half an hour.
Do you?
More or less? Adjourn. This should be louder. All right, are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right. Reconvening, reconvening the meeting from open session or from closed session. Can we have a report out, uh, Ms. Tameri, from our closed session?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, the board met to discuss employee release. No actions were taken.
Okay. Uh, on to our next item, which is reports. Do we have a report from CSEA? Any reports from ETA? Seeing none. Do we have a superintendent's report?
We do. I, board members, I'd like to report on a few things, uh, for you this evening. Uh, in particular, I'd like to let you know that, um, I had a meeting at Pixar yesterday to begin a conversation regarding our ongoing, uh, or beginning, renewing a relationship with Pixar, uh, in some minimal ways, and they're interested in continuing that conversation with the city and us as well, so that we can create an overall sort of master plan of what that might look like. Um, I'd also like to let you know that, uh, we have a training, an optional training for teachers this Saturday, uh, which is occurring, uh, to support our teachers, our K-8 teachers, and the adoption of a new math curriculum. It's a Common Core curriculum called Eureka Math, and that's gonna be, uh, we're getting some help from, uh, an instructional math coach from Berkeley Unified, who've just finished their first year with that curriculum and have learned a lot and would like to share their mistakes and what they, and the things they've learned from, and their good things, of course, uh, to help us. And so, uh, we also have gotten requests from Piedmont to allow three of their teachers to attend, and I've said that that would be fine, so we have a few Piedmont Unified teachers attending as well, because they're very interested in the same curriculum. So that's, uh, occurring this Saturday, and I'm happy to report that ETA and I and the local CTA representative met for a few hours this afternoon, and we are, we're all in very strong agreement regarding, uh, the fact that the teachers should be fairly compensated for their time when they're attending trainings, uh, as well as being compensated, um, for the possibility of choosing to come back one day early next week, because we're also offering a Tuesday, Wednesday, English Language Arts Common Core Training performed by a company called Action Learning Systems, which I've had a lot of good experience with. Uh, teachers aren't technically required to report to work until Wednesday, uh, but they have this, uh, two-day training opportunity, and if they, um, are not able or choose not to return until Wednesday, they'll have a one-day, very condensed version, but we'll still have some Common Core training for them. So, uh, that would be, uh, my report for now. We're preparing for the, the new school year.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, we have no president's report. We have no president here tonight. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that, uh, board members wish to pull?
Can, um, we pull nine and 10?
Okay, I had those as well.
I'd like to pull eight.
Eight, nine, and 10. And I had a question on, uh, on one warrant, uh, from number one. Any other items pulled? All right. Why don't we start with, um, the polled items and, um, start with, uh, number one on, on the warrants. Mr. Beneg, uh, could I just have you explain the, um, there are two different payments reflected on pages five and 10, uh, to Oakland Unified of $500,000 each. So, looks like we paid out a million dollars to Oakland for the Santa Fe site, maybe, is that, is that, am I reading that right, or maybe you can just explain what happened there?
Uh, according to the lease, we made a payment and addressed it to the address for Oakland Unified that was on the lease, and they have temporarily moved their district office, so they never received the check. And so we canceled that one and then reissued another one, and in between, the post office returned, uh, the check, which we had canceled, and we had that destroyed. So, only one payment, uh, was received by Oakland and cashed by Oakland, so, but that's the explanation for the two checks that were issued. One was, like I said, canceled.
Okay, so, uh, $500,000 is, is all we paid to Oakland for Santa Fe?
That's correct.
And that, is that for, uh, a year that just occurred?
For the year coming up, the 14, 15 year.
14, 15. Got it. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the warrants? All right, so we'll. Uh, so let's go on to item number eight. Member Pats, do you wanna ask your questions there?
Um, so I just, I'm not gonna, I wanted to vote on this one separate, just because I can't support the appointment to a position that I didn't support the position for. So, I, uh, I feel like that's an incongruous vote, so, uh, I just wanna reiterate before we vote on this, that I really feel like the high school students and the teachers really deserve a dedicated principal and not someone with shared responsibilities, that we should really focus in on one person at the site where that's their sole task. So that's my comment on it.
Okay. And my understanding is that, that the, um, uh, Ms. Allen will be primarily focused in serving in principal function at the ESS site. So I'm comfortable voting, voting to approve it. That's, that's my position. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Well, maybe we should vote on number eight just independently? That, that sounds like mainly what, what Mr. Pats is requesting. So why don't we do that at this time?
Member Ash.
Yes.
Member Dwin.
Yes.
Member Pats.
No.
Member Athel.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item nine then. You wanna start with your question?
Yes. I just wanted, um, Ms. Harrell to kinda just explain the functions of this, um, contract with St. Mary's College and what these interns would be doing.
Before you do that, let me ask my question or make my point, and you can fold your response into both. Um, the, my suggestion is that the, the title of this agreement be changed and the word intern be struck and replaced with student teaching, because it seems that the content of the agreement is about student teaching, not about interns, uh, which is a different entity. But you can tell us if you agree with that. Otherwise, I'm in support of what we're trying to do here.
Well.
'Cause the, the, these teachers are, that are coming are really students who are getting their student teaching done. They're not going to be the teacher of record.
No, these, when they were.
As an intern teacher.
Interns are, in this particular agreement, interns are referred to as those students who need, uh, you could call it field placement, but it's not called field placement. They have to go out and do so much, it's what is referred to as internship actual work. So, in this instance, although they're student teaching, they, it is referred to as internships.
Yeah. And, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it the intern referring to the school psychologists in this instance?
Yes.
That's what those are.
Yeah. Who are indeed doing an internship.
Well, it's, it says, teacher, students enrolled in teacher training curricula and/or students enrolled in counselor or psychology training curricula, so it seemed to be across the board.
I can take that word, I can change that word.
It's actually, as I read it, it's, it's really only in our agenda item is the, uh, the, the agreement itself talks about student placement agreement, which.
That's just, because this is commonly how it's, they're referred to as interns, I can take it away, I can change it.
In particular, I guess.
Do you need me to bring it back, or do you want your approval with that note to take that word out?
It, it, I guess, given that we're approving an agreement, not an agenda item title, uh, I'm fine with the agreement as it is, 'cause I think it's, uh, a clear, clear enough nomenclature of, of what it's covering. I just wanted to be, make sure we, you have the same understanding that this is about student teaching placements, albeit including in the psychology or counseling.
Correct. Although the psychologists won't be actually teaching, they will be doing their internship work. Yes. And should we get a student teacher, then that individual would be doing their student teaching work.
Right. And the, the, the student, uh, the students who are getting their internship placement for counseling and/or psychology, are they, uh, under the supervision of our district staff?
Yes.
Are they, are they independently?
No, they're under the supervision.
Providing services without?
They are under the close supervision of our district staff.
Now, is that, is that we're doing a?
If you could just kinda illuminate how this contract will support students.
In order for students to get their.
No, our students, Emeryville students.
Well, in Emeryville, in terms of Emeryville students, it supports our students in that it gives extra support for our counseling department, the interns work in our wellness department, and because they're closely monitored by our school, um, school psychologist, it just provides another layer of service and assistance for our children, for our students.
So that, so these, um, these employees will be working with our wellness department.
Right.
And supporting our students with counseling and any type of other student support services that they may need.
Right. They are students in the school counseling and social work program, or the school counseling and psychology programs. So they have secured a degree of training and a degree of education before they're able to move into the internship process.
Right. I'm with you there.
So, they're, they're coming in with some experience, some educational background behind them.
No, I'm just, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with the credential part. I just, you know, want, for the public and for the board to explain how this helps our students in Emeryville.
It just gives a, a number of more bodies to help provide services to our students.
Right. Okay. Um, that's good. Now, go ahead.
And I also wanna point out, this is a great way to build the reputation of Emeryville in these teaching programs, so when people graduate, they have a lot of options.
Exactly.
And they go, oh, you know what? I did my student teaching in Emeryville, it's an awesome place, that's where I wanna have my career.
Right.
So that's the other really big component, is we get these people early, and it's saying, even with the psych interns.
Right.
They may not end up working for our district, 'cause we only employ so many psychologists, but they're out there and teachers go, you know, I really wanna change districts. They say, you know, I did Emeryville, it's a great little district.
Right.
Perfect for it. So, throw that out there.
So it's also, it could be a, a marketing tool for Emory as a district to attract, you know, teachers.
Correct.
Great. Sounds good. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Well, there's one more, there's one more.
Yeah.
There's one more.
Yeah, I think as a, as a model, uh, this is the right way, the thing, what we wanna support is, um, is student teaching and field experience. I think that, that's the, uh, before someone actually takes on the full responsibility of being a counselor or, or a teacher.
And it's.
They oughta, they oughta be in this kind of a clinical experience, so, um, and I think we do benefit.
It helps the students, it helps the college program, it helps the students meet their, their academic needs, and it helps our students as well, our district as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially when you can have, when a student in our district can be able to communicate and talk and share their issues with someone that they feel may be around the same age and not too much older than they are.
Sometimes, yes.
Right. Okay.
All right. Um, why don't we take public comment on this item, number eight?
Yeah, I just feel so very strongly that both student teaching and the, the psychologist and social worker internship programs are more than just benefiting those students, they are very powerful. The internship programs, that's what's built our wellness program over the years, and I think it's important for you to understand that.
That's where I was going.
Without those interns.
Right.
Yes, the, the, we have the supervisors on our staff now, we had a fight to get them and get the funding for it, but there, we don't have the capacity without those interns. They're doing real work with students all the time. And in terms of student teaching, over the years, student teachers have turned into some of our best teachers.
Right.
And they're, they give relief to our teachers in the classroom, you know, they, there's another adult in the classroom, and at the same time, it's very, very important for, whether it's Emeryville or any other school district, for the children of this country that we train teachers well. And so having them in our schools is important.
Great. That's, thank you, um, Dr. Baugh. Now, before we move to number 10, I'd just like to ask a question. Now, we've been, as Dr. Baugh has said, we've done a terrific job with this, um, regarding our wellness program, and it's kept our wellness program alive. My question is, can we look at doing the same, um, getting the same type of services from, from these colleges with tutorial and mentoring of our students?
We can look into that.
Yes. On the academic side?
We can look into that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Okay. We, can we move, we can move this here? Oh, okay.
Why don't you go up to the mic?
Mind if I jump on in here? But with regards to that particular question, um, in our special education department, we, this last year, um, offered field work placements to two university, uh, students, um, and that was a way for us to expand services, um, in academics for our students, at the same time as providing, um, supervised, um, experience for those, those individuals who are earning a credential in special education. This next year, we anticipate continuing to do that, as well as to bring on student teachers.
Yes. Great.
So yes to your question.
Thank you.
And then just a comment about your earlier question, is we have over 60 students in our district that actually have, um, written down on a, a document that they require counseling services. If we only had the service of our school psychologist, we would be unable to meet the need. We also have, um, social emotional learning curriculum being implemented at both sites, and we would be unable to do that without the, um, extra support of counseling and school psych interns.
Very valuable. Okay. Right. Thank you.
Okay, why don't we move on to number 10? I think we'll save voting on this till we combine it with the others.
Just again, if you can kinda explain how the program is supporting our teachers?
Well, this program is an actual, a teacher internship program in the sense of hiring, it's a, it's a, this is different than just a student who would need their field placement. This program would actually be teacher interns, individuals who are in a teacher credentialing program. They have fulfilled X number of requirements and are in a position whereby the, their teacher credentialing program, be it, um, if they are part of the Alameda County Program or the Cal State East Bay Program, or I think there are some others in here that they mentioned, um, the holy names. Those students would then be at a place where their credentialing program, their college or university, can then recommend them to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing for an actual teacher credential, and they could begin, they could be employed as actual teachers within districts after districts have pretty much exhausted all other avenues to find experienced credential teachers. But the internship credentials are valid, CTC issued, CTC approved credentials.
So, okay. So it's another way of us just trying to market our district and find the best qualified young incoming teachers to our district.
It helps, it helps those pro, it helps, if you look at the, the universities here and the, and if you read the cover letter, the kid, it actually supports a number of programs within the county and within the colleges and universities. It's somewhat of a, a necessary service in some regards. It does help the teachers and it does help the districts.
Great. Thank you.
So my, um, yeah, I wanted to, to pull this item as well to, to make sure I communicate my, um, priorities and feelings on this, uh, for the, our new superintendent, and, and to remind the board that, uh, um, our first obligation under the ED Code, 44225.7, is there is a hiring priority, and if we have fully credentialed teachers available with a preliminary professional clear, we, we should hire those teachers first. And only if we don't have a, a, a fully credentialed teacher available, then, uh, we, we should go and hire an intern. 'Cause an intern is still in training, they're still learning to be, become a teacher. And unlike the student teaching experience, an intern is the teacher of record. They have control of the classroom and the curriculum and the testing and the assessment of, so, um, there are, now, there are some very effective interns who, who, you know, can hit the ground running or soon thereafter, but, um, uh, the law and, and my own preference is, well, let's go with someone who's been fully trained before someone who's still in training.
And just, just for a little bit more clarification, I, I understand, 'cause I've worked with you a couple of years now, and I understand that the fully credentialed teachers will always be the first priority. But just for those who may not know, even with the interns, the interns are also mentored and supervised by individuals from their credentialing program. They are assigned mentor teachers and supervision here within the district, so they're not just put in the classroom and left to go. They are still closely structured, closely supervised, closely monitored, and they still are required to receive X amount of training. Districts have to guarantee and agree to make sure they provide enough training, certain training, and allow them certain meetings in PD so that they can fulfill the true requirements of the job. That is, the, the, not the first priority is.
I appreciate that.
Should nothing else work out.
And, um, picking up on your point, I know with, with satisfaction that this agreement, specifically upgrades, as it is required to by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, upgrades the amount of supervision, uh, by our district.
And the colleges.
And, and by the universities, um, on a regular basis that interns have to get, and particularly upgrades the, the kinds of pre-service training that they need and in-service support they need to teach English learners.
Yes.
And those upgrades are, are, I have to take personal responsibility for, because, um, it, it, that all came about as a result of, uh, litigation of public advocates, and me and my colleagues threatened against the commission last year, and, um, uh, because we didn't think they were doing enough to, uh, require districts and universities to support their interns around ELs. Uh, and, and we got regulations in place, and this is the trickle-down effect of that. So I, I, you're right that it's better, and, and I feel good that it's better.
Thank you.
Lastly, my one question for you, though, is just to be clear that we have the right of refusal, uh, on any of the interns that, that any of these institutions might offer us. Correct? We're not agreeing to take it, only.
They don't just, we don't just say, send us somewhere, they say, I have one, send, no, no, no. After we've gone through our posting of our positions, and we've, applicants come in, we haven't quite found the person, these individuals apply for these positions just as everyone else would. The schools don't send us people, the individuals apply, and based upon how they, um, interview, what their background is, if they do a sample teaching, then we, if we consider offering them the position, then there's, that's where this agreement comes into place. The district and the colleges will work together. If that individual has found, that student, that person has found a job and they have the offer of employment, then that college or university credentialing program can take what they have, and then with that recommend them for an internship credential, the school actually recommends them.
They gotta have a job with the district first.
They have, have a job with the district, and then the, they'll be recommended by their college or university, but we're not just sent people yet, well, I guess a short answer to your question was yes, we do not have to take.
Yeah. And, and, you know, in particular, I want, you know, I feel, uh, very comfortable with Cal State East Bay and Holy Names and the USF Special Ed Program, those are all, you know, well-established institutions. I feel less comfortable with the other institutions that are, that are part of this agreement, which are, you know, some of which are online, um, you know, Southern California-based credentialing programs, uh, and, you know, uh, one of them, Patton, is a for-profit institution that was, you know, two years ago or three years ago was placed on probation by WASC, um, for not, you know, necessarily keeping up their standards. So I, I don't feel as comfortable with, uh, every institute, equally comfortable with every institution that's, that's part of this agreement.
We understand, in our past practice, without me standing here mentioning any specific names, our past practice in, with the few interns that we have hired have aligned with your thinking. Not having heard this statement from you before, just coincidentally, our practice is aligned with that thinking.
Well, as a follow-up question to member Athel, who in our district are the, is the individual who, um, assesses the interns that come through the district?
That depends upon where the placement is. If it's a multiple subject or if it's a single subject, it'll be the school site administrators and their, that'll be one and their. it'll be the school site administrators and that'll be one and they're also assigned a teacher within the district to work with them.
And I guess secondly, have we actually been doing strong assessments of these internships that you know of?
Yes.
Okay.
They get evaluated just like everybody else, yeah.
But currently, we don't have any interns, teachers, do we?
Currently, we do not.
Yeah, I think we currently, all our teachers are fully credentialed.
We might have one, but I think they all have preliminaries.
Just a point of clarification, but they, we have some teachers who started as interns.
Yes, but a few, not a lot.
Okay. But, you know, you start as an intern, when you graduate from your intern program, you get a preliminary credential, become fully. So it's, I have no problem with people who've gone through internship pathways. Once they graduated, they're fully credentialed.
But that's just not, you don't want that to be our first place we look.
Exactly. Someone who's currently in an intern, right. I don't want that to be our first place. But, you know, I think, I think we recognize that the job market, there's more money coming in the system with LCFF and, you know, it could be getting tighter to hire teachers, including, you know, specially math, science, special ed, always a shortage area. So it's not a given that we're going to be able to maintain that, hundred percent fully credentialed.
We're gonna work hard. We're still, we're not ready to let that go yet. So we're gonna still work, let that be our first priority and we're gonna work hard for that. So that's, I just want to leave it, that's what we're always gonna work, strive for first.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board on this item? Any public comments on this item? Okay, no one was pulling number 11, so I think we're ready to vote on all of the consent items minus item eight, which we already voted on. So one through seven and nine, 10, 11. You want to do a roll call?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Vice President Affil?
Yes.
Okay, on to the discussion action items. First item is ECCL update. I see John Baker in the audience.
Yes, Board members, John Baker is back from his recent trip to Spain and is looking pretty healthy after his long flight two days ago. So we appreciate him being back to give us an update of what we have going on with our project. And happy that Mr. Baker is back since we have since received approval by the city council for our ECCL project. And we're gonna have a new school board on next fall for all of our students and teachers.
While Mr. Baker is doing, getting ready, do you want to just give a thirty-second update for folks watching at home about the approval that occurred last week?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Last week, we were present at a city, special city council meeting, which had a number of items on the agenda. But one of those items was our construction contract and joint operations agreement with the city, joint, excuse me, joint occupancy agreement with the city for our new K-12 Emeryville Center for Community Life Construction Project. And so the city council voted after presentation, and I spoke briefly at the presentation as well. And we had on hand our architect, our legal team and support, our management company that John Baker works for, Swinerton, as well as Turner Construction staff. And I was very happy to be there and speak at the, in front of the council and to be there for the approval of this project.
And like John said, the last time I was before the board was on July 30th and we had a kind of presentation discussion of the process of negotiating that final, the final terms of the agreement with Turner. That was followed by board approval on August 4th and then city council approval on August 6th, which is what John was just mentioning, for both the lease-leaseback agreement and the JOA. So obviously major milestones achieved last week. The next question is, where do we go from here? I just wanted to quickly show an update of the tab, the table that has been reviewed for the last couple of years. You can now see that all of our pre-construction activities really are all complete, all the sort of upper half of the, of this table. The next time you see this document, we're gonna expand the lower half, which is construction, furniture fixtures, equipment, move-in, vendor coordination, all that kind of good stuff. Now that we have the, the contract milestones for the lease-leaseback agreement, we are in the process of completing our master project schedule, which is where all the, which shows all the coordination activities that we're also managing in terms of furniture, move-in, vendors, all that coordination that takes place in addition to the Turner Construction Contract. So the next time you see this document, it'll have quite a bit more and different information. But the good news is all the pre-construction activities are now complete, which is an awful lot of work done by the district over the last several years. And now we're kind of proceeding with, with the kind of easier-to-understand stuff, which is construction, furniture, move-in, those things of that nature. I want to remind everyone the milestone schedule, these schedules are now in the contract and are per contract Turner's requirement to meet. There's a substantial completion and a final completion milestone for each of three phases. Substantial completion is the milestone where the portion of the project can be occupied for its intended use. That's when we can start moving in furniture and all those sorts of things. Final completion is simply when they have to get all of their documents and things of that nature and warranties, punch this complete, guarantees and things like that. Again, the gym and pool will be complete in summer of next year, the high school in the fall of next year, and the complete project in the spring of 2016. So now that we have these milestones, we're gonna, we're gonna work on coordinating the rest of the move-in with working around to these, these schedules. The next steps include several things, the certification of the...
Sorry, can you just go back to that? I was still working through it. So, explain to me again the difference between the high school final completion, say, on 12/30/2015, and then the complete project, what's happening?
Yeah, the high school needs to be complete next fall so that instruction can, that we can move in and start classes.
So is it the K to eight, is that what's happening?
Yes, the complete project includes K through eight plus also the library, administrative facilities, sports fields. There are a number of other parts, basically buildings. A, B, and C are, and the site work are the four components of the project that are completed after the high school is completed.
Does that include the, I don't have the right name for it, but the sort of the community center?
Yes, correct.
That'll be after the high school?
Correct. Basically, the building D, which is the building at Forty-seventh and San Pablo High School, that will be complete. Work will be ongoing in the remaining three buildings, which are the A and C, which are along San Pablo, and B, which is the K through eight school. Those buildings will all be closed in. They'll be, the exteriors will be completed when the high school opens. But the interior finished work will complete. And will complete shortly thereafter. I mean, substantial completion is in March of 2016. So a couple of months after the high, classes begin in the high school, substantial completion of those buildings. So when the, when the high school moves in, the buildings will be done on the outside, those are the three. But there'll be work ongoing inside the buildings. And so one of our, one of our tasks is gonna be to have the work plan for occupancy while those, while the completion's done. There'll be a construction fence so the construction trades can complete while high school is in session. Another thing is we've, we've discussed a temporary food service that would take place in the library before the library is completed. That's something that the city and district users in our weekly meetings will have to work as we move forward over the next year.
And so it sounds good that there won't be huge cranes lifting big slabs of things around while the high school's in session.
Right, all the exterior buildings will be complete. The work will be taking place inside the buildings.
Is it gonna be, how noisy is that gonna be?
Not really. It's painting, tile work, flooring.
It's not jackhammers?
Finishing electrical, putting, putting, finishing ceilings, light fixtures, grills on, 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 air, on heating and ventilation systems, things of that nature. Again, there's only really, once in January when classes start, there's really only two months left of work. And that's really gonna be interior finishes, door hardware, things of that, things of that nature.
Got it. But the sports field won't be ready for the high school?
That's correct. I mean, one of the things we can look at is how that, how that schedule kind of sinks. Basically, what, the way the schedule works is once the buildings are complete, then the finished site work is completed, which is sort of sidewalks, landscaping, and sports fields. One of the things we can look into to see how, what, there could be a kind of sub-phase of having the field be completed before of that, that March date. That's something we haven't really, it's not, it's not a contract requirement, but something that could take place. The gym will be complete because that'll be done in the next summer.
Right. Yeah, I would, I would recommend if we can do it to prioritize the sports field next so that, you know, at least maybe the baseball team can use the baseball field or the track team come, come March, April, instead of not getting...
It's a really good point, one that hasn't really been discussed since we've been on the project. But we'll take a look at the schedule. I think that that, that would be feasible, given the sequence of the work.
Yeah, I thought that part of the issue was that they were gonna be base their, you know, machines and stuff and they needed to go in and out of the sports field. But maybe if they're, they don't need that, if...
What's gonna happen is, what we did in our contract negotiations, we did allow for, one of our efficiencies we realized was that once the buildings are complete, once the other three buildings are complete, is that the job site offices can move within those buildings.
Perfect.
And thus save on trailer rental. And so that will free site work up for completion. But we'll take a look at if we, the completion of those fields. You know, tip, the thing is the trades are sequenced in a certain way. They want to kind of do all the work at the same time. So, but that's, it's a, it's a good point that we'll discuss with the team.
Great, thanks. Member Dwin, did you have a...
So then moving forward here, we have certification of the remedial action work plan, which is the soil remediation work. And Jose Leanovo from DTSC has been on vacation. He returns tomorrow. We have a conference call with him tomorrow to discuss his final comments. So that, that, that approval, should we, should be able to procure that approval by the end of next week. We then have the completion of the demolition contract work, which is footings and the big slab. Those need to come out and that takes a couple of weeks.
So when you say that we'll get that approval, that is the state formal approval saying what you propose to do or what you have done already to remediate these soils is, is good and you can proceed with construction?
Correct. The report has been issued to DTSC by Ninyuan Moore. That was issued a couple of weeks ago. Some review comments came back. We have a number of things that we need to, what we want to discuss with Mr. Leanovo. He's been on vacation. He comes back tomorrow. He's been a really good partner. It's probably been the best DTSC experience that I've had, where he's been very collaborative. And so we've kind of waited rather than working with some other folks in his, in that department. And so we have a conference call tomorrow to go through those remaining points and probably a final set of revisions need to be made, submitted to him. He can review those. And so we've already submitted, gotten comments. We need to kind of do the final submittal. And so we anticipate approval by DTSC by the end of next week.
And again, that's approval that the work that we've done is sufficient.
Right.
Not like, good plan, now go do it.
No, no, it's actually what it is, is it's, there's a report that's required that shows what, what activities, it has all the, it has all of the testing results. There are a couple of ongoing monitoring things that need to take place for several weeks. So even though the report we completed will be contingent upon that monitoring. And so there are a couple of things that we need to do. But basically, it's the, it's the certification. In order for DTSC to certify the site clean, they need to approve a final, quite detailed written report, which has been submitted. Again, the first round of comments have gone back to Ninyuan Moore. We were, we're gonna discuss a number of those things tomorrow with Mr. Leanovo, with the anticipation that we'll sort those out, issue revisions to the report, and he can do the final approval next, next week. But that's basically review of the report and certifying that the work is complete. The only thing we know that's gonna take place after that is again, there's some, there's a couple of monitoring, like a gas monitoring and a lead paint monitoring that needs to take place for another month or so after, after we've, from the current time. So there'll be a condition of that approval. And then there's probably, there'll be a final, final approval of those tests that will take place. But the main, the main important, the really important thing is that the review and approval of this report by DTSC is required before we can commence with the rest of construction.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Mobilization, which will include putting into both the construction trailer and also the district's trailer on-site, where we will recite along with the inspector of record. Rough grading is the first activity, which is gonna be preparing all the building pads for construction. Site utility work will follow that. That's sewer, storm drain, electrical, data. That'll continue. And then a couple of things coming up are also our next Citizens Oversight Committee meeting, which, the date of which needs to be confirmed. It may have been confirmed while I was, I was gone.
I think that's coming up. Isn't it next week?
August 20th.
August.
August 20th, okay.
And also the next facility, District Facilities Committee meeting. Those are the next two meetings which need to be scheduled.
Okay, good.
But looking at the schedule, one thing that I'd like to, I think that the board has seen this format. I intend to, every update to the board, review what we call a look-ahead schedule, twelve, look ahead, looking twelve weeks ahead, just to show everyone where, what the progress of the project's going to be over the next twelve weeks. And so this shows that basically in August, by the end of this month, we will complete the DTSC approval and the remainder of demolition, which will take about a couple of weeks, and mobilization on-site. There's a little bit more interior demo in the gym that needs to take place and shoring of existing structures. So by the end of August, we'll be done with all the demolition, solar mediation work. Then in September, we're gonna commence with grading and site utility work. Storm and sanitary, storm and sanitary site utilities, site electrical, site water, domestic and firewater service, and site communications, data, phone and cable lines. And at the end of September, we'll have all those site utilities, which is all the site utilities placed within five feet of the building pads. That work will all be done by the end of October. So what you'll see out there is you'll see minor earth moving, not, not to the extent that we had really during the soil mediation. Preparing the building pads and site utilities. And then as we move into November, we'll see, starting to actually build the concrete, the base rock and concrete building pads. Underground plumbing and underground site utilities will follow this. But this look-ahead type schedule is a more detailed type of schedule that I'd like to present to the board every once when we make our regular presentations.
So, Mr. Baker, when do you think we'll actually have steel going up? When will we see that?
Steel fabrication, steel shop drawings are complete. Steel fabrication is going to commence, I apologize, I don't, I don't know the exact date, but I think it's, it's, after notice of proceedance has been issued. If recall, we approved early detailing and doing shop drawings before and those, those have been largely completed. But I believe that at the end of August, fabrication begins. And fabrication is about three months. So steel would be, you would see steel going in around the first of the year.
Okay.
And there's three, there's a month of site prep and utilities, then we do building pads in December. The schedule accommodates some weather delays. We anticipate those. The main thing is that the rough grading is the main activity. Once we get that done, the, the work is not delayed very much by rain because the, the site grading, the, the site rough grades are compacted. And we don't really have, if we're doing grading during a rainy season, that's a different story. But this schedule allows us to get that, that out of the way so that we would not have, we would have not major delays if it rains in December. But the schedule, it built, there are scheduled days, allowable scheduled day, rain days built into the schedule. But getting all, getting the site utilities and rough grading done by October is very helpful because then we just need to pour concrete. That's not really delayed much by rain. Steel erection's only delayed if it's a rainy day. And that will start in, in, I believe, January.
Thank you.
We talked about having a groundbreaking ceremony at some point.
I think that's right.
And what, yeah, what can you tell me about?
They're working on it.
Who's, who's they?
Yeah, I believe the project... Yeah, I believe the project team.
I think that, that, uh, the project team is ready to go in terms of, uh, um, having, um, sort of some construction equipment, which we have, will have out there, and we're, we're more than happy to help coordinate the activity. I think the scheduling of that and making sure the appropriate officials are there is something that we would look to the district and board to, to kinda pick those dates, and then we can go take it from there.
Which lead time would you need on that?
Probably about two weeks.
Because it just seems like it'd be a great thing, way to kick off the board retreat. On that Saturday morning, do the groundbreaking and then go into retreat.
But I don't think-
But I don't think there's enough lead time.
When is that scheduled?
23rd, next week.
Yeah, a week from Saturday.
That, that might be a little hard because we still wanna work with the city also.
It's gonna be hard to get the governor there in that period of time.
But it's, it's something we can work, uh, we can bring up at the city meeting as well.
I think that we should, let's talk about it on Monday because we've, I think there's always a, um, a desire to have, to have the right, political officials and, and board and council officials there. Uh, but I think it probably, it really is, on our standpoint, planning the, the event itself is the easy part. Planning everyone's schedules to really accommodate those who wanna be there and participate is usually the harder scheduling task.
Well, to, you know, to the extent we want, um, Nancy Skinner or Barbara Lee or-
Gotta have all, um, gotta have all of them here.
Senator Chu, who's a big community school supporter.
Some former employees of the district possibly.
Yes, yes.
Former employees of the district. It's got, you know, but the, anyway, the, if we want legislators, we can't really do it till September, till the session's over.
We'll have it.
All right. Any other questions or?
I would just post to staff that, um, we could get a facilities committee meeting sometime in September. Get back to those.
Any other, is that your presentation?
That is, that's all I have.
I'm happy you have any of the slides for us. Very informative. Any other questions from the board? Any pub, public comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker. The next item is approval of amendment to the Oakland Unified School District lease of Santa Fe School. Superintendent?
Yes, um, we're asking the board consider approval of this amendment, uh, to the Santa Fe lease so that we can ensure that our Emory Secondary School students have housing throughout, uh, the time period of the construction, uh, of the San Pablo site.
Any, um, questions, comments from board members?
I guess the only comment is that we're not committing ourselves to the full year of payment if we do not occupy the building for the full year, correct?
That's correct. Uh, we had received the draft copy of the First Amendment and we sent it back to Oakland with a change. And you'll find that change on page one, under the agreement, under number two, rent. The last sentence, sentence reads, "If the lease terminates before December 31st, 2015, the rent will be prorated as mutually agreed upon by the part, by both parties." And in our meetings with Oakland, we both agreed to prorating the rent should we leave early.
Okay, great, thank you. So, it's only an agreement for half a year to start with, and then we, we, um, can take it shorter if, if we want, right?
That's correct. The facilities are ready to move in sooner, we will, uh, be doing that.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? Superintendent?
Just a quick question, Mr. Bonet. I'm sorry, I didn't get to ask you this before the meeting. Do, do you have a sense of if we were, if we were to have it prorated in a mutually agreed upon way by both parties, would we probably just be dividing the amount by the number of the calendar days?
Right, or, um, yes, oh, actually the month. Because we talked about, uh, possibly, moving in during the Thanksgiving break.
Okay.
Should the facility be ready that soon.
Okay.
And Oakland did express interest in coming in early too, so. It could be the days, so if we both mutually agree upon the days, we would do that.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Does it make sense to spell out the proration at this point in time?
It was, that was what was crossing my mind. I just, I apologize for not being, getting a chance to talk to Mr. Bonet about it, but that, that was the thought I was having.
Has the, um, Mr. Bonet, has the Oakland seen this already and?
They approved.
Yeah, they approved it, or are they just waiting to get it from us?
No, we sent this back to them and they added the proration statement in.
I see. Well, do we have? It says as mutually agreed upon by both parties. That could be, that could mean as mutually agreed upon at such date in the future, we'll talk about it, or it could mean as we already discussed. Does it, does it mean as we already discussed, or?
We did discuss this when we sat down with Oakland. Dave Gallagher and I, uh, in our meeting with the Assistant Superintendent and Mr. Kadashi, who runs the facilities program, for Oakland. And they did express coming in earlier, uh, if we were out in between the end of November and the 10th of December, let's say. So we had discussed this earlier and we agreed upon the proration, uh, terminology at that time. We received the First Amendment, did not include that in there. I made a phone call to Mr. Kadashi, spoke to his secretary. She confirmed that, and this is the agreement that we got from Oakland with the proration statement in there.
So, it sounds like you didn't discuss exactly how it would be prorated.
No, that will be deter, well, it'll be determined whether we stay in there till the end of December or not. Because it's all gonna be dependent on how soon the high school is available to us. We don't know if, uh, rain will affect the schedule, if, uh, other outside sources affect the schedule, so.
I mean, so, you, I guess I would-
And we don't know what affects, what may affect their schedule.
So I'm sure it'd be like, what, one twelfth of the, um, the total amount?
Actually, uh, if it's a month, it'd be one sixth.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, i- is it, if we're in for a partial month, are we paying for the whole month, or, or is it really a day to day?
That will be decided once we determine what day we, we move in and what day Oakland would like, uh, Santa Fe back. They've got, uh, several projects, projects going on in their own district, and they're looking at moving a, a elementary school or a special ed, um, center into Santa Fe. So it's all dependent on their schedule also. They're, they're looking to move in as we're moving out.
May, may I ask a question? Mr. Bonet, would you have a recommendation for the board if the board felt that it was, would be, would be more appropriate, would, would help with the clarity if we, if the board wanted to have the language altered, to spell it out before approving it, uh, that, would you recommend that it would be, would your recommendation be that to add some language that we would, you know, the rate, the, the, around prorating the rent on a daily basis from the time period of July 1st to December 31st? Just so we have it clear up front and don't have to negotiate that possibly, or would you recommend something different?
I, I would recommend approving the item as presented. We have a really, a really good working relationship with Oakland. We've asked for certain things and they've been very amenable at, uh, uh, providing service to, to Emory with regard to that site. Whether it's, uh, maintenance items or other items that the dis, our district isn't responsible for, they're very responsive to, to our phone calls. And we have a very, um, very good relationship with Oakland.
So I gue, I guess I would be inclined to, um, approve the, the item as is, with the authority for you to insert the language. If they're amenable at this time, that, something along the lines of the superintendent's recommending. It's my experience in, in negotiating contracts, it's better to be clear about, well, what, how do you calculate this at the beginning before you ever get there than it is once you get there? Because once we get there, there, there will be ways to prorate it that might work better for us. There will be ways it might work better for them. And so if we've kind of agreed up front, that's a fair way to do it, then it's better to do it now.
So, let me ask this.
If they're not amenable to it, then, you know, I'm comfortable, I guess, going with, with the language as it currently stands.
So when does Oakland Board approve this contract? Do we know? When, when does this go be for Oakland? It'd be on the next board meeting. It'd be on, it'd be on Oakland's next board meeting in September, or late October, or September. So I guess, I mean, it's up to the pleasure of the board or the superintendent, would we like for this to go back and spell some of these things out, prorated, or are we happy with, you know, just doing what we're doing now and take the motion that Member Alfeld?
So just for clarity, the motion on the floor by Member Alfeld is that approving this as is, but giving,
giving you and Mr. Bonet the authority to, uh, insert more specific language that articulates a daily prorata- if Oakland's amenable to it. So you don't have to come back to us, that you already have the authority to do that.
Yeah, I think with the level of money we're talking about, I think any ambiguity in the contract, even if it's based on relationships, people change over time and we could have different people on Oakland's end, different people on our end, trying to negotiate this, so I think it's really critical. We spell out as much as we can before we approve it. I'm not as comfortable as Member Alfeld with giving you the leeway to do it. I think if we want the change, we make the change, particularly given we have time before it goes to Oakland Unified. I think it's important that we have it spelled out. I don't wanna, I don't want any ambiguity.
So why don't we do that, you know, why don't we take-
Would that be a different motion then?
It would be.
Yeah, I didn't actually make a motion.
Oh, you're not, okay.
I proposed an approach, which could be made in a motion, which, which I haven't formally made, so.
I, I would just-
We're shaping a different motion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable seeing that it won't be getting back to Oakland until September. If we have a good relationship with Oakland, we could, you know, talk with them, see what the proration will be on their end, our end, bring it back to us on the 28th, and then we can approve it. Is that doable?
We can do that. We, we were feeling lucky that we had the extension at all because they were a little standoffish-
Yeah, they are.
Uh, initially, with regard to allowing us to stay, because like I said, they have several facility projects going on.
No, he's right.
And we kept pressuring them to amend the agreement. And it was kinda late in the game, uh, with regard to when the high school was gonna be built and pushing that schedule early and making all of the timelines, uh, fit together. So the, the, the district did some due diligence with regard to getting Oakland to, uh, to get this in the first place, because like I said, they have projects going on all over that district and they were wanting to move into Santa Fe, I believe, considerably earlier.
So, eh, it, is the thought process or is the concern that they're gonna, they're gonna back out if we ask for a, a more detailed understanding of how the proration's gonna work?
No, we'll, we'll approach that with them. What I'm saying is to go ahead and, uh, approve the agreement as is with giving authorization to Superintendent NRI to make that attempt at the change of the proration on a daily basis. But, uh, we're kinda held over a barrel at this point.
Can I then slightly change what you said? Approve as is with the mandate that it gets spelled out, but giving either of you the authority to do so. Does that work?
Yeah, they're about the same. And then, and then I would say, and then just get back to the board what those, what those amendments or changes are. Because I, uh, Mr. Bonet is right. I do know Oakland wants that facility to move in another school, and they want it now.
Sure, absolutely, and I think it's a good idea. The case that happens to be December 2nd, I, I hope it's not, but if it's December 2nd and if things change for Oakland's timeline and they say, "Well, you owe us another month, and we'll prorate it by the month," it'd be nice to have it spelled out maybe so.
No, right, right.
Okay.
Did you put out a motion, Member Ash?
Member Ash has the motion.
Um, I, I'd like to hear Christian's thoughts before I do so.
Oh, I just think, I, well, there's always thoughts and they're not always good ones. Um, yeah, I'm, I, you know, I, I always get concerned when I say we're sort of over a barrel. It sort of implies that we didn't do this soon enough, or that it was not, you know, and, and/or that we're having to put these edits out now. I would think that having a very clear contract is something we would've gone in with and not, you know, relied on that. So I just, those are my thoughts, and I'm hesitant to sort of say, "Oh, well, because we have to do this, we'll give you, try to work it out, but if it doesn't happen, then go with this un, you know, this ambiguous contract." So I'm, that gives me pause, but, you know, I-
You're fine with the motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with the motion.
A second. And then I would just ask that staff would, um, send something out to the board once those changes are made.
Sure.
Should we take a formal vote?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Dwayne?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
I suppose in FM.
Yes. All right. Oh, was there any public comment on that?
You always.
Sorry. Can I do that if there is?
Is there public here? I think there's just staff.
We, no, we have, we have public here. We have our public.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to the next item. Agreement of the California Department of Education for Child Development Services.
Yes, board members, we're, uh, the purpose of this is to ask you to approve an agreement between the Emory Unified School District and the California Department of Education for the funding of the operation for the Head Start program. This is an annual agreement, I believe, that we have each year.
You know, uh, I just remember one other thing on the last item. The, 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 the contract as it's written seems to suggest we have an Assistant Superintendent for Facilities named Timothy White. I think that's, that's Oakland's, right, the signature line is just ambiguous. Uh, it's below your blank signature line, so.
Got it.
I, I would move that up to be where it should be so that it's not the Emory Assistant Superintendent Facility.
Oh, I see, that's where Timothy White is listed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's underneath, it's kind of in the Emory section.
Got it, okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and fix that. Thank you.
So any, any, uh, board questions or comments on, um, item three?
Yeah, I just had a few comments and I see Karen is gone. But, um, when I looked at the contract and I looked at the dollar amount, I see that the dollar amount of this contract, it serves about 18 subsidized kids. And my, you know, really my question is, you know, being on the ECDC task forces, you know, at this point, and I know there's been some issues there with enrollment and, and, and other things, you know. First of all, is ECDC really, um, serving 18 subsidized kids? Um, I know there was some problem with, you know, with, um, enrolling subsidized, subsidized children. But, um, even more than that, it would be nice for us to sometime in the, maybe the spring, have the ECDC give a presentation on the activities over there. Yeah, yeah, this is going to, is this, this is going, this is going to ECDC, not, not Head Start. Is this Head Start? Okay, I'm sorry.
Head Start.
I scratched it off. I scratched, forget everything I said. Forget everything.
If you still want that presentation, we can make note of it though.
Okay, make note of it, but scratch everything else.
Okay, so scratched. Other, uh, other, other comments on, on this item?
So move.
Second. Public- Public comment before we vote? Any? Seeing none? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, opposed. Next item is approval of resolution 1-2014-15, childcare services and signing authorization.
Yes, it's a approval for, to authorize designated personnel to sign contract documents with the CDU.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Any public comment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Next item is item five, approval of resolution 2-2014-2015, administrative reductions for particular kinds of services.
The purpose of this, board members, is to ask for your approval regarding the items that serve as a reduction of our admin services for the school district.
Any public comment? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Next item is a calendar of events. You want to cover this, Superintendent?
Just a point of clarification, do you want to hit item K before you?
Did I miss?
Yeah, so any board report, reports from board members, activities?
Okay, board reports, announcements, we have something from Member Ash at least.
Just a happy belated birthday to Member Pats.
All right. Any other board reports or announcements?
And Member Dwin, I don't know if you want to report out on the city approval as well, anything, any comments you want to make from last week being president?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the city, you know, for approving the contract. It really shows the commitment to the partnership. It was a wonderful feeling, and I guess for me, you know, just, Melanie's not here, but being one of the oldest members up here right now, I mean, it's been a long haul. It's been a long haul, you know, sometimes you didn't think it was going to happen, or how long it was going to happen, but it happened, and I'm so happy with everyone, and now the work begins, really begins, and let's, let's give the community what we promised them and what they want, and that's a center of community of life.
All right, here, here. Any other board reports or announcements? No, okay. Superintendent, you want to go over the calendar review?
Sure, we have our semi-annual board retreat coming up Saturday, August 23rd. I've met with President Dice on two occasions in the last week and a half, and I have a draft agenda that I'm, I still have to revise one more time, and then I'll be getting that information to you. We have our next regular board meeting on August 27th, and then we have listed on here the masters and governance classes that, for any board members who have not attended those courses, we have Friday, September 19th in San Jose, and there's also a February date in Burlingame. I don't know how the board members feel, well, I know how one of the board members feels, actually, and I think.
I've been through it.
Yeah.
I'm a CSB, a governant, master of governance.
Yeah. My understanding of it is that, for myself as well, that it would be helpful for being a new superintendent, as well as board members who haven't been through the course, that it would be prudent and for us to attend these types of courses.
Very helpful.
Okay.
Member Dwin, do you want to close us out?
Yes, again, I would just like for the Board to adjourn in the memory of Adros Calhoun, who was a former school board member and a businessman in the community, if we can give him a moment of silence and then adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned.